Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this regularly scheduled Springfield County Township Board of Supervisors meeting. Our first item will be a pledge to the flag. Please join me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have not had any executive sessions since our last meeting. So at this point, I would like to open up the floor to communication from citizens. If there is anyone in the audience who would like to address the board, please come forward. State your name and address. There's nobody, let's see. I keep turning behind me because that's where it used to be. Anybody on the Zoom meeting want to address the board? If so, please click the raise hand button. All right, then we will move on to engineering reports. Environmental engineering. Standing in for Diana.
Yes, I am Sherri Wolf. I'm the engineering manager filling in for Diana Knight, who's home ill this evening. And I guess I'm supposed to ask if you have any questions on the engineering report.
Anyone have anything? Don? All right, thank you. That was quick and easy. All right, John, civil engineering report.
Good evening. I just have two quick updates on my report. First, as I mentioned in my report, the TASSA grant that we received for the sidewalk and roadway improvements at Giant Shopping Center. We had a number of meetings with their coordinator and the manager. And I participated in a PennDOT phone call. It seems like they're working with us, but this, we may have jumped the gun. I was told that, oh, you have to have it bid ready by August. And we put it on PennBid, but they want it on the PennDOT's electronic construction management system. So we put a note on the, an addendum to say that the formal bid documents are going to be withdrawn from PennBid, and we're going to switch our venue to PennDOT's electronic construction management system. So it seems like we could, you know, both PennDOT and our coordinator from RKNK is acceptable to that. I sent out, there was questions about the right-of-way drawings, and I sent out information on the right-of-way. I need to follow up this week, and we'll get that project back on track. The only other update I would have is we continue to work on Davie's Drive. We're getting closer and closer to opening that. The roadway looks pretty good. If you haven't been out there, I think there's a couple of final things, and I'll defer to the management, manager when that roadway will open, and I'm sure he'll have an update for you in his report. That's all I have.
I think we can wait until the manager's report.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, next we have our consent agenda. We have items A through F.
Move to approve consent agenda items A through F.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Next we have bids for closes, contracts and agreements. We have an item to accept a grant offer for Market Street traffic signal improvements part of Green Lake Go in an amount of $455,600.
Mr. Chairman, a while ago, we submitted the grant for signal, traffic signal improvements for the Market Street from North Hills Road to Mills Street. Mills Street's where Home Depot is. And we were successful in that grant, obtaining that grant. As I've said recently, PennDOT has changed up their system a little bit for grants. So now the new format is first we have to accept their offer, and then afterwards, then they'll send me the actual agreement. And then, once I get the agreement, that'll come before the board. So it's a two-step process now. Instead of before, it was like a one-step process. So right now is just authorizing me to accept the grant offer.
Your motion to allow the manager to accept the grant.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Next we have subdivisions in land development, conceptual consideration for zoning text amendment in York Gallery.
Good evening to the Board of Supervisors. This evening, we have Monarch Development Group represented here with the Monarch Group person here, as well as their attorney speaking on behalf of their proposal in regard to potential text amendment to our zoning ordinance, as well as a potential multifamily housing development occurring on the Galleria Mall property. And with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Nahila with Barley Snyder, representing the Monarch Development Group.
Good evening. My name is Tom Nahila from Barley Snyder. Good to see everybody. I'm here with Brandon Johnson from Monarch Development. And Monarch is under contract for a parcel on that property, the subject property that we're talking about, New York Galleria Mall. It's about a 2.5 acre portion. We actually did submit a plan. I don't know whether that can be drawn up or, if not, that's fine. Just to give you guys a little bit of a visual of what we're talking about, we are in the parking lot near the mall. We are under contract, and as part of that, oh, yeah, there it is. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I know we submitted it, but just to have it up there. So we're talking about that 2.5 acre piece. This property is in your commercial highway zone and also in your town center overlay zone. And what we would need to be able to do, what we're proposing to do, is a multifamily development in that 2.5 acres, about 75 units, four floors. We're kind of in just a general concept plan at this moment. Neither of the zones, the commercial highway or your town center zone, allow for multifamily. So one of the things that we wanted to talk about tonight was just the possibility of doing a text amendment to either of those zones to allow for multifamily. We did reach out, and we've met with township staff, also with Bob, to kind of walk through that. It's our understanding that you guys are kind of updating your comprehensive plan. One of the things you're looking at is the town center overlay of what other things we might be able to do as part of that. So I know that process has started. We are, we would probably, in speaking with staff, we'd probably like to move a little bit faster. So as we started to talk through that, we were asked, well, we asked to come here and have a conversation with the supervisors. One, again, we're not here in any formal capacity, other than to just understand and discuss the concept. So we kind of wanted to little, get a little bit of your feedback tonight and see if that's something that we should continue to explore. Yes, yes.
I'm Brandon Johnson, Vice President of Development with Monarch Development Group. We're a real estate developer based out of Mechanicsburg, Pennsylvania. Been around since 2005. We've largely focused, if you look at our website, on affordable housing with the tax grant program. More recently, we've been diving into, delving into market rate luxury rental housing. And the picture that you see there is a deal that we just completed construction on last summer. The one in the middle there is a project called Signature Flats at Hershey. It's a 75 unit, about three and four-story building. As you saw in the notes, our plan is to really carry a lot of that to a site like this. We'd like to do kind of a similar, similar luxury rental type of development here. We really think, as developers, that repurposing a parking lot like this, underutilized parking lot, is a really good use of space. It's better than greenfield development. It also, there's, you know, you're putting housing where there's density existing, using existing infrastructure. You're putting better, more feet in the mall, which we haven't had formal discussions with the mall yet, just the owners of the portion of the mall that we have our contract with, which is the storage unit. We've begun the outreach to them, but there's a, but we haven't connected with them quite yet. That's great. I appreciate it. Sometimes it's hard to track down with an organization like that, but I appreciate that. And yes, so first, we wanted to have this meeting and just kind of discuss and get some feedback on the thoughts and interest, or whether this would have some potential to move forward in this kind of direction with this type of scale.
So Signature Flats at Hershey is more like in parcels that would be across Pleasant Valley up between Mezzo and the church. Because when I saw what you had here, I thought, boy, did they put that in the parking lot of that mall up there in Hershey? I used to work about 25 years.
Yeah. Yep. Yep. It's across the street from the Tanger Outlets Mall, that property. Yep. Yeah, this is, I'd say even better, because you've got a fully paved site. So to some extent, you're going to end up with more impervious area than is there now. You're going to have more grass or something. We're going to have to mill up part of the parking lot. Yeah, it's, everything's already there, you know, to tie into. Yes.
The concept being, you know, of course, to infill where we can in existing spaces as opposed to using up greenfields. So it's kind of the, hopefully, the concept. Reinvent that area in and around the mall, which is, I think, something that you guys want to do, too.
So the reason I asked about the reason after the mall ownership is because they did have to be with us to talk about possibilities on the mall. I guess, I mean, anybody here, thirty years, talk about that process and more of a layout approach moving back, so it's not what we want to do. So if you possibly have maybe some synergies of what they want to do and what we want to do, and that could play into the whole kind of development, that part of the plan that could affect everybody. So I don't necessarily against the rules. And I feel like we should at least have a discussion with them.
I was wondering why that little red light was flashing.
No, that is something, staff mentioned that, too, and that's something that we absolutely would do. This is, we just wanted to progress this, just to twitch further, kind of come in front of the supervisors. You know, staff is very supportive, but of course, they don't speak for you. So we just wanted to make sure that we were at least on the right path. Again, as I've been here in front of you before, I know we have homework to do, and we're happy to do that. And that's definitely one of the assignments we can do. We're, because we're thinking the same thing, is some interconnectivity between our development, the mall, and walking trails, those types of things make sense.
Yes, the number I have is for the first one. And I'll give it to you. Mark has it, too, and he can give it to you, but.
I do.
So what is the area in blue? That's your, what are your outlines there?
Sure.
The blue and the red.
Sure. So this, what we'd be doing here is subdividing off a part of the seven and a half acres that, yeah, seven and a half acres that are the parcel that's owned by the entity that owns the storage unit space. It's WMG. So the blue outline is the two and a half acres, kind of to be subdivided section, and then the red outline is the five acres that are left after that. We had worked with the WMG to figure out where that line could possibly be. It gives this, that allows for that driveline to stay on the low side of the retaining wall, you know, within their property or control.
So the storage, I didn't realize the storage company actually bought, I thought they...
There's several parcels.
There's actually three, at least three parcels that are part of the mall. There's this, there's the parcel, large parcel owned by CBL, and then I think Boskov's is on its own parcel owned by identity called Pax or something.
So you really wouldn't be making the deal with the mall owners. You're making the deal with the self-storage place.
Correct. They own that parcel, so that's who we interact with. But we have to interact with, and we had planned to talk to, you know, the other mall owners, CBL and Pax, so.
So the project that you did in Hershey, did that require any text amendments or anything? Or was that allowed in the zone it was in?
That, that had, that required, I think it was a conditional use and a master plan process, but that's just how their ordinance was set up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we'd be happy, I mean, we're happy to talk to the mall owners. What we wanted to do is just get a little feel for this, and then, again, you have these two zones. I did look and under, when the casino came in and when the self-storage came in, you actually did a text amendment to your commercial zone, your commercial highway zone, your kind of underlying zone, as opposed to the overlay zone, which is fine. Again, however you guys want us to proceed is more than we can do.
Yeah, they were trying to shoehorn in like two or three of these buildings, and it was, one of them was backed right up so that most of the, most of the rooms were looking straight into that retaining wall, and it just, yeah. Not sure whatever happened with it, but I don't know if it's because we didn't do a text amendment, or they decided it wasn't feasible at the time, or what.
Really just trying to get a handle on, and you don't have to answer this now, but just where the comfort level is, if that type of scale of development is something you're open to. Like I said, we think it's a great fit for this location. We think that scale is appropriate, but wanted to kind of have that, have that discussion and get any initial feedback or thoughts at this time.
When we met with staff, I know Bob said that you guys are looking at your comprehensive plan. One of the things, there's, I think, a committee that was formed to look at that comprehensive plan, in particular, the overlay, your town center overlay district. I think the timing that was discussed there was that could be, you know, a year, 18 months out. We, of course, would like to be able to move that a little bit faster. But what we suggest, you know, what I was, we were talking about, and we're happy to do this, too, we're happy to talk to the mall owner. I know that there's like a committee to that. We're happy to start, talk to them, to the committee, to kind of parallel the course. I just recently did a very similar text amendment in one of the townships, Cumberland County. At that same time, they were doing, they were redoing their entire ordinance. So we kind of worked hand in hand with them to kind of propose a text amendment. We were actually moving faster. We moved forward with the text amendment, and then basically, the township said, look, we moved, we moved faster with our rezoning than we thought we would. So we ended up being about four or five months apart. So we kind of put our text amendment on hold, waited, and actually township modified their new ordinance to kind of fit what we were presenting with some of the text amendment, because it's just, it made sense. So we were basically worked hand in hand to kind of make a better product. So I think everybody was happy with that. So that's something, again, you know, we're at the beginning phase, just trying to get some input, and whatever homework you want us to do, as we've, you know, as I've been here before, if you want to see something, let us know what it is. We're happy to do it. We'll definitely talk to the mall owner. If there's something we can do with your committee to kind of get a feel for where they're going, so we're not taking this off track, we're happy to do that.
When you mention the committee, you're talking the comprehensive plan?
I think so, yeah. I think that's what it was. I know they, Bob said they weren't doing that, they weren't meeting all the time or anything, so it might be a little bit harder to do.
I'll connect you with our consultant, Tom.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, so then, at least the two of you could have some dialogue.
That'd be great.
Yeah, that would help, too.
You know, we can share what we did with the other township. You know, we adjusted it. The way we ended up doing it there is we did a text amendment, made it a conditional use. The multifamily was a conditional use, and then had a separate section under the ordinance that said, you know, in particular with multifamily, this is kind of density levels, heights, impervious, those types of things. So we can happily work with something like that. But, yeah, no, if Mark can give us the contact at the mall, we'll happily reach out to there, and I'll happily reach out. We can have, we'll have those conversations, and, you know, as long as we can continue the conversation here, we just wanted to get any big red flags that, you know, that there was something that you were seeing that you just did not like, wanted to get, walk away from this meeting with that, just so we know.
I like the positioning of this building a whole lot better, and I wouldn't mind seeing more cars in that parking lot, but.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the new thing, is to try to save some of these malls, you know, so. And, you know, as we've talked last time, infilling in these types of areas that have already been developed make a lot of sense, so.
I'll just share with you three things I jotted down quickly, which just popped into my head as you were talking. The first one goes back to when I first got started in this occupation over 20 years ago. I had a meeting with a special interest group who wanted to know if I was supportive of smart growth, and I thought it was a trick question. I mean, who would not support smart growth? But I do question whether this falls within the concepts. And my first concern I wrote down was putting residential into this area. I'm not sure that makes a lot of sense to me. But again, just a concern, not anything that's a deal breaker at this point. The second thing I wrote down was better understanding what the tax impact would be of having residential on that site as far as the township revenue goes. And then the third thing, as somebody mentioned earlier, what are the unintended consequences we're not thinking about in terms of doing that for this zone? What does it mean elsewhere within the township?
Well, I'll try to address some of those if I can. One is, I think that this type of building is the appropriate type of residential for this space, right? The proposal and concept that we have in our head to carry that, our Hershey deal kind of concept over to here, that building's 39 one bedrooms, 36 two bedrooms. You have very few children, a bit of no children in the one bedrooms, and maybe you've got a, you know, child in the twos. But so I think that if you had, I feel like you'd have larger units, three bedrooms, or you'd have more kids, you'd have a school impact then, that would be more material, would be, would just be different. But I think this will attract probably young working professionals, as well as seniors who are looking for a low maintenance living option, because this would be an elevator service building. So in either case, I think, I think it's the right type of residential. I think that's an important distinction then versus like, you know, three-bedroom, four-bedroom houses. Tax impact will, of course, be determined by the assessment office and how they assess this. I can't really specify that anymore. I think, yeah. And unintended consequences, I would say, as far as a text amendment kind of strategy would go, would be that our plan would be that we'd write the text amendment in such a way that it would be limited, and it wouldn't have other unintended consequences. We are, like Tom said, not only in the commercial highway zone, we're also in the town center overlay. That's probably the starting point, to be in both of those, and then we could add some other criteria in, which would be the triggers for when that would come into effect, so.
I'm still stuck at young working professionals. I thought those were three mutually exclusive words these days. Period.
Yeah, and on the unintentional consequences, we can, we can kind of do an analysis like we did last time, on the last time I was here. It will just depend on whether we're going to text amend your C, your commercial zone or your overlay zone, because of course, that impacts a little bit larger. Like I said, when I look back, you ended up amending the commercial zone to allow casinos. That commercial zone is much larger than your overlay zone. So, you know, if we wanted to limit it, we could probably do a text amendment in your overlay zone, kind of limit that to certain, those areas of the township that I think that you have already identified as kind of the areas that make sense for those types of mixed residential, walking communities, and some of the other things that are in that, in that zone. But we can kind of take a look at that.
Kind of did a little bit of that study with where there were parcels of land that could potentially support apartments just recently. And.
You did that, Tom? Yeah, I actually, yeah, so, yeah, well, when I was here with Vanguard, probably about a year ago, we ended up doing that for you.
Yeah.
So I can do the same thing, you know, here, kind of, we picked a part.
We refresh that and take a look and.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, yeah.
As far as unintended consequences as well, I would, I would add for consideration, what are the unintended consequences of not, you know, opening the door to something like this, right? What happens to the mall long-term? I think we all know that that retail, commercial retail landscape is evolving, online shopping, everybody knows that. We're kind of still figuring out how it's going to look. But I think having people nearby to the mall is a good starting point to helping support whatever the future of malls looks like. So 100%, I think this is what smart growth is all about, you know, building where you have your existing infrastructure.
But one of the reasons I mentioned unintended consequences is, let's say, the mall was planning on splitting some stuff up, having more walking paths there, and they were looking at putting apartments over all of the parking areas that they have available. What does that do to the picture for market rate apartments in that zone? And does that end up with a whole bunch of unrentable units that is not a benefit to either you or us in the long term? You know, that's an unintended consequence of doing something like that, and a real potential, if that's something that the mall would decide that they want to do. Maybe working together, they put in some more like high-level dining or other types of amenities that a market rate apartment could take advantage of, other than just the casino. So there are some synergies there that could be a real benefit. Not talking could cause other issues that might not help you or them.
No, I understand. Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, that's, that's one of the thoughts that I had. And then, obviously, as we take a look at where apartments are in what zones around the township, does that get out of hand? And at what point do you have too many apartments versus single-family residences and other, other forms of habitat?
Yeah, well, in connection with the smart growth, it was interesting, because again, the township that I just did it in, we actually, it was a commercial zone, never allowed multifamily. It was the typical commercial, you know, office, you know, banks, all the other stuff. So it did take a little bit of convincing on the line of, you know, the same question of, well, wait a minute, does a, does a residential apartment building really make sense there? And we were able to really walk through the, that kind of new synergy of kind of the interconnectivity. In particular, this township was doing a lot of township trails. So our piece was kind of a weird piece that there was the end of the lines, you know, they kind of all went there, but nothing connected them. So this was a, it was a nice piece to connect some of that, too. And then almost really do present, there's some, some space there that people could, that a lot of people were working at that could walk to this, shopping. that, that could walk to this, shopping, restaurants, so. Yeah, well, again, we appreciate this feedback. We know we have some homework to do, we'll, we'll go, we'll go do it and we'll come back. Keep having the conversation, but we appreciate it.
Sounds good. Thank you.
I will email both of you the contact information.
Thanks, Mark. Yeah, we'll look for your connection with your, with the comprehensive plan too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Communication from supervisors. Anybody have anything?
Yes, I, oh, go ahead.
I have, I have one tonight. I, I went to the Pennier event and welcomed the governor to Missberry Township. And he seemed pleased, so that was pretty much it. I listened to his speech, which was about an hour and 15 minutes late, but other than that, it was, it was a good speech. It was a nice event, well-attended. That's about all I can say.
I bring you all greetings from Pennsylvania State Association of Township Supervisors. I was there this afternoon as part of our annual conference planning committee session. So I just want to take this opportunity and encourage all of you to attend the upcoming PSATs conference. Dory knows how to register you all to attend. And so it's a lot of good fun up in Hershey, at the Hershey Lodge. I ask you to give some consideration to join me in April of 2024 at the conference.
When's the meeting that's here, up at Heritage Hills?
25th of October.
October 25th.
Same night as the fall dinner.
Don't forget to remind me. Anybody else? All right, solicitor's report, Charlie.
I don't have anything to add to my written report, unless there's questions.
Buddy? All right, township managers' report, Mark.
The only thing that I have that, to add to my written report is an update on Davie's Drive. Davie's Drive is all, for all intents and purposes, completed. The holdup delay right now is there was some miscommunication between the signal contractor for the railroad installation and MED Ed. That's been resolved from MED Ed's point. MED Ed has powered, run the power to their equipment. Now we're just waiting on the signal contractors to return to power up their equipment and test it all out. In talking with Mr. Worster before the meeting, he asked when a ribbon cutting could occur. So if that's something the board wishes to do, we can have a, a mock ribbon cutting before the roadway opens. And if the board wants to do that, if we want to pick a date and time here tonight, if, or email me if, if you don't have your calendars with you, so, that's it.
Thing that I think we should do, in fact, it's probably something that we could have done for this building as well. Like to try to get a little bit more publicity for some of the great things that we do. And, I mean, we had pretty good attendance from the public and the comprehensive plan and everything else at night, but it would have been a nice photo op, I think, to, to do something like that. So doing it for Davie's Drive, I think it would be a good idea.
And I'm willing to reach out to York County Economic Alliance. I think they do have like a ribbon cutting team.
They do.
Yeah.
I could reach out to Kevin as well, or if you want...
Can they sharpen the scissors before they get here?
You want me to email the board?
Yeah, please. So when do the sidewalks get completed and when can we drive the first car across the, the road? I think we should have a car waiting to go through the ribbon.
We may, we may not be able to do that if, depending on the signalization, right?
The roadway cannot open until the railroad signals are fully functional. So I assume, just because they're, say they come tomorrow and energize everything and test everything out, doesn't mean we have to open the road, that they, road cannot be opened if they don't work. If, if that makes sense.
So are you suggesting a mock cutting?
I'm suggesting a mock, yeah, because we may run out of time.
And if it works out to, they energize everything in the meantime and we have the ribbon cutting scheduled for X date, we can keep the road closed until the ribbon cutting, cut the ribbon and then open the road up.
That would be ideal.
But we'll plan a date.
Close for a month because we didn't do a ribbon cutting.
Yeah, we don't want that either. You're threading a needle, yeah.
Yep. All right, let's, let's pull that together.
I, I, one comment on, on the chairman's concept about that glorious new building you're in. I, I don't think that we've missed the opportunity to celebrate the building. Even though it's open, I mean, we could dedicate it, we could do something. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't rule that out if you, if you think that that's something we should do.
I think that's a good idea.
You too.
So I'll send an email out for both dates.
Sounds good. Maybe we can go from one to the other. Anything else, Mark?
I do not.
Any questions for the manager?
I did have a question, just generally for Terry, since she is still here. We are at 9:30, obviously coming up on the end of the quarter. Just wanted to get a sense how you see revenues at this point, with economic conditions being what they are?
Our plans are holding steady. Other taxes, your tax bureau, taxes, local taxes for home and hall division. Our real estate transfer tax bill is like high based on the fact that you don't have a lot of transfers going on. Sales in the township have definitely slowed. They expect us to be our budgetary figures for 2023 based on, you know, rates are still up. So we're cautious about 2024 budget and our budget for next year.
Okay.
What would your projection be for how far are we behind on real estate transfer?
Just under 50%, which they...
That's the only revenue line on that we're behind, is that a fair statement?
Yeah.
Yeah. Which is not a major piece, but...
Contributor to the budget.
Thank you.
Anything on old business that we want to discuss this evening?
I guess, I guess under Yalfer governance, I'll, I'll just mention that there was a joint presentation to the townships last week, I believe it was, on the budget proposed for next year for Yalfer. And my impression is it's a very conservative budget. I think our contribution next year goes up just over 2%. Unlike previous budgets, I don't think there's anything really controversial in there that we need to be concerned about at this point.
I would concur with that assessment, George.
When will that come forward for a vote?
It has been issued, we as a commission issued it forward, so all the townships should receive it. We would...
December, when, when the board addresses our main budget.
I would not be opposed to maybe having on the agenda for the next meeting that we can pass it and not wait till the last minute.
Well, we do have a budgetary process for the township, of which this is an element of it.
It's in our budget.
Yeah.
Our portion's in our budget, so I believe it has to wait till December.
It has to wait.
Yeah, because it's part of our budget approval, the outlay. But, I mean, we could conceptually recommend we include it, I guess.
Okay, then on to new business. This new business is Denny's Toys.
It is, Mr. Chairman, A and B.
First one, authorization to purchase a 2024 International HV513 SFA heavy truck chassis in an amount not to exceed 151,976. And then part B is the truck dump body and snow removal equipment for the chassis in an amount not to exceed 146,000, both through Co-Stars with attached contract numbers.
And both are in the budget.
With global warming, is snow removal equipment even needed anymore?
I hope not, but...
There you go.
Are we going to name this equipment?
It will be called Vehicle 26.
Wow. That's far from snow begone Kenobi.
Mr. Dvorak made that comment, but last year, we did not put the plows on one time.
So don't buy it, don't put the plows on and see what happens this year.
Yeah, yeah.
Keep your fingers crossed.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the expenditures for the 2024 heavy truck chassis through Ascendant Trucks and the truck dump body and snow removal equipment for the chassis through Stevenson Equipment.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Have fun.
Delivery rate on the chassis isn't until second quarter of '24.
That's fast. And I think that brings us to the end of our agenda, so meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.